Open session with a roll call. Trustee Kirby Gonzalez.
Present.
Vice President Wong.
Here, not present.
I too am here. Clerk Venegas. And Christie will be here shortly. Let's see, moving on to public comments. Mario, did you receive any public comments on this measure?
There were no public comments received.
Okay. So we can go on to the start of the study session. Measure D. Measure Z. Study session update to the Board of Education. Monique Stovall Assistant Superintendent of Business Services.
Good evening, can you all hear me okay? Okay, great. This evening, there are a variety of members joining me from inside our district and many consultants to share an information item with you this evening. We're not asking you to take any action. We are providing an update from the April special meeting and providing you additional information that we'll ask you to take action on at a later date. So today again is information sharing discussion that will lead to some actions at a later date related to our Measure Z. There are two topics. First is our Quick Strikes projects. We wanted to come back to you with some additional information that you requested in April. And then also a discussion on the master budget for our facilities project and a cost mitigation plan. That's a plan to help us to align our activities, our projects to the funding that we have. Okay, so we'll start with our first presentation, which is our Quick Strikes presentation. Okay. And I'll share with you throughout our conversations tonight. As I mentioned, there's a variety of in district team members and our partners who will be assisting me with the presentation this evening. So the first topic tonight is our Measure Z. Quick Strike Project Costs and Funding Solutions. So we have identified costs related to our Quick Strike projects. And in our conversation, we'll provide you some funding solutions that we have have considered and are bringing forward to you. Next slide. We'll begin with an overview of our conversation this evening with a timeline. And those are the activities we've completed since April. Estimates, which are Quick Strike cost estimates. Funding solutions, and then our next steps. Next slide. Quick Strike projects, what are they? Quick Strike projects take less time and planning and cost less than modernization projects. Modernization projects are the big projects like at Elkhorn and Westfield that we're considering. Next slide. In facilities, we really love this quote here. Plan your work for today and every day, then work your plan. We try to do our best to make sure that we're having very good planning, very good preparation, so we can have a good execution. Next slide. We'd like to share with you the timeline, the activities we've completed since April that brought us to this evening and be able to explain to you what went into getting the new cost estimates. Next slide. There you go. So last April, we received board direction for detailed estimates. You asked us to come back to you with an estimated cost for each item of priority. And that's included in the backup for this agenda item. In May, we began site visits and we began refining the scope of the projects. That continued in June. In July, we were getting our estimates and we kept refining those estimates. Next slide. In August, we began looking at funding solutions. And we did that in September as well. And here in October, we're here with you for a board workshop. And then we'll discuss our funding, we'll seek funding approval for some of the funding that we're proposing for the Quick Strike projects. And we hope to begin initiating projects in November. Next slide. So our cost estimates. Now we'd like to review the cost estimates related to the Quick Strike projects. Next slide. So the cost estimate process, we'll go in a bit more detail. We focused on the priorities of the Measure Z Subcommittee. The Measure Z Subcommittee was composed of seven people. And so we looked at those projects that received four or more votes to identify the priority projects. The district and our consultants, we visited sites where they were onsite to evaluate the current needs of our district versus the facilities master plan. As a reminder, the facilities master plan was completed in 2019. We're now in 2021, so a lot has changed since that time. Not just with our district, with COVID, but with costs, with supply chain, etc. There's been a lot of changes. And so we wanted to make sure that we receive costs based upon now. We evaluated the project scopes and materials for equity throughout the projects. For example, the original plan may not have included all of the schools for some items that through community forums, through conversations, we've identified our projects that we want to be able to have at all of our sites. Next, we determined the estimated cost per project and we began to evaluate funding solutions. Next slide. These were the Measure Z priorities and the costs. We had specific categories for our Measure Z projects. Deferred maintenance, equity, positive campus climate, early childhood education, and future ready. There was one other section, but they did not identify in there any priority projects. The projects included gutter and roof repair, playground improvements, paint, water bottle filling stations, technology, asphalt repair. And of course, we've had a lot of conversations about covered lunch areas and outdoor learning. The estimated cost for these priority projects for Quick Strikes comes to about $22 million. I want to make note that this cost does not include the technology infrastructure upgrades as we're still looking at the cost and defining exactly what that would mean for each individual school. Next slide. So let's talk about funding solutions. Next slide. Last week, the district brought to you an S R three expenditure plan. S R three is the elementary and secondary school relief grant. And in this grant, it is providing funds to mitigate the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. An important part of this funding is that it allows for school facility repairs and improvement. With the draft expenditure plan, it included many of the Measure Z Subcommittee priorities. Next slide. In the, so the Quick Strike projects that were included in the expenditure, in the measures, excuse me, in the S R three plan included the covered lunch areas and outdoor learning spaces. And about 6.6 million was included in the S R plan. It included shade structures, about 2.3 million. It included water bottle filling stations at about 1.1 million. It also included about 2.6 million for a variety of playground improvements and infrastructure repairs. Therefore, about 12 million of the 21 million, if you do approve the S R plan, will help support the Quick Strike projects. Next slide. So as I just shared, if the S R three plan is approved, it'll cover about 60% of the Quick Strikes. So where would the additional funding come from? We propose that we evaluate alternative funding sources such as E-rate, deferred maintenance, and some other grants that we may be able to qualify for. Through these other measures, we anticipate that we will eliminate the need to use Measure Z funds for these priority Quick Strike projects. Next slide. So what are the next steps? Excellent. So this evening, we'll have board discussions, we'll answer any questions that you may have. Next week, at our next board meeting, should you approve the S R three plan as is, then we'll be able to identify about 12 million for these Quick Strike programs. And that will allow us to begin initiating some of these projects, programs as we identify alternative funding for the remaining projects. Next slide. I want to take a moment to make sure that I'm recognizing the team that helped prepare this presentation and did a lot of the work so that we could be here together. There's Terri Sousa, Angie Nichols, Yvette Hernandez Lopez, and Serge. Forgive me Serge, I always mess up your name, you're going to keep working with me on that. And then also our consultants. Next slide. So at this time, we are available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any questions from the board or any comments? Start with Vice President Wong.
I'm just gonna look to you and Clerk Venegas about your thought. You're appointed to the commission and you're just, we'd love to hear what the discussions have been. And I'm moving forward with others.
Excuse me. Yeah, I mean, as I looked at it, we had, and when this came before the board last time for direction from the board, when we brought our Quick Strikes versus what our intentions were with the full bond. The, the costs of, of doing, you know, Westfield, Elkhorn, and the Performing Arts Center fully encapsulated the cost of the $150 million bond, or yeah, $150 million bond. Therefore, there would be virtually nothing available for any Quick Strike projects. Now, in my opinion, if we can do many of these Quick Strike projects with S R monies, that's great. But I think at this point, what you'll see later on in the presentation is that even the, even with what we have identified for our big ticket projects goes beyond what is capable in the bond. So we have to find alternative sources to help that as well. I think the Quick Strike projects that we've identified will have to be pared down some just to capture the things that we can do with supplemental sources as well as the S R three funds. That's just my opinion. Because we're still, to tap all the Quick Strike projects is roughly 22 million. We have identified roughly 12.8 in S R funds. That's, that's considerably short of where we need to be in order to hit all those Quick Strike projects that we've identified. There may be some Quick Strike projects that just can't get done. So that's just my, my two cents. Al, do you got anything?
Meeting, the meeting was a while ago. So, so to not repeat, not repeat what Kobe said. But just hearing, hearing how we can potentially use S R three funds for, again, the, the Quick Strike projects. Unless we have another idea, other ideas about how to use it, I think that there's a benefit in that. And again, when it comes to the big ticket piece. I know, I know that there's a, as far as like cost goes, it just continues to increase the longer we take. So I know that there's a, there's a sense of urgency in, in being able to formulate a plan that, that allows the budget to take care of what you, what you guys had already proposed even before me coming on the board. I know that there was already an idea, there was already a vision just to get Measure Z on the ballot, right? Just to get that going. So in respect to that, I think it's, you know, been kind of following Kobe's, Kobe's lead as well.
And to follow up with that, there is a question that I have is how much in E-rate and other grants, like for maintenance and, and other grants, do you think is possible for us to capture? Or at least to leverage?
That's a good question. So I, at this moment, I'd have to go back and research our history on how much we're able to receive from our E-rate. I do know that this year, we started refunding our deferred maintenance fund. And I think we could probably look for, you know, close to five or six million from that fund over the next few years. So if we continue to invest in that fund, then we'll be able to continue to take care of our facilities with that fund.
So go ahead.
So I'm trying to reconcile the estimates that we have in attachments with the slide 13 and how we landed on S R Strike. I don't know if it was a Subcommittee conversation. I'm hearing, I'm seeing Kobe saying no. So just help me understand how we landed on these four primary, right? With this, this, this fuller list.
Absolutely. So for those of you that, that aren't able to see what list she's holding out, this is the backup documentation that was included with the board item that identifies all of the priority projects and the estimated costs. The items that were shared on slide 13, which include the projects that were included with the S R three plan. Those projects in the S R three plan were based upon our community engagement sessions and our conversations. So based upon input from staff, from parents, from community, from our students, these particular projects were of highest priority to our community to include in the S R three plan. We did share with them, or actually share, shared amongst ourselves what the Quick Strikes projects were. And then they were able to give us feedback and we were able to say, okay, we have Quick Strikes projects that we know that we want to be able to do within our, our district. And our community has, you know, the same mindset that these are priorities. So that's how we merged these two documents. Like specific costs on each document, what you're looking at, Trustee Wong. Unfortunately, there's, there's always a bit of a change when we're doing estimates. What we estimate today, estimate today is going to change tomorrow. The S R three plan and estimates were completed prior to our final estimates, which is the document that you're holding. So that's why you see a slight difference in the exact estimates, our exact costs that were included in the S R three plan versus our cost estimates that were completed about a week or two ago.
Okay, so I, I'm just wondering, because there are more projects here that are on the S R three funding that aren't, aren't on, for transparency purposes, that aren't on slide 13. And maybe I missed it and I scrolled through quickly. But so for example, here you have gutter replacement, new playgrounds, right? That are all, you know, kind of, and thank you for sharing that, Mario. So are we not, so I'm trying to reconcile the one, two, three, four projects on here with the full list here. So are we, I'm trying to understand, like, are you saying we're only going to do these four, not the others on the list?
So the items listed under the S R three, those are included in the S R three plan. The gutter replacements are in the last item, facilities improvement, so infrastructure repairs.
Okay. So you lumped it in. I got you.
Yes. Any other questions on that, that topic?
And so the other funding, are we hoping for other funding or that's just common extra going to, like, we're finding it elsewhere?
That's the funding to be determined. So should that be E-rate? Should that be deferred maintenance? Should it be grants? The additional eight million, almost nine million is what we'll have to identify that funding.
Okay, and then for example, parking lots, you only have a fraction of parking lots. But I'm assuming, how are you all going to prioritize the parking lot statement? For example, because clearly you need, you know, 2.1 million more dollars. So how, like, out of curiosity, how you, how will you prioritize that?
So first and foremost, we know that if you do approve the S R expenditure plan, we can go ahead and move forward on the projects that are identified there. The other projects, for example, the, the parking lots, we can look at our deferred maintenance plans for those. Other items such as additional shade structures, that's a new purchase. And so we would look for additional funding resources. Should it even be the general fund? We'll identify what funding we can be able to identify for that. And I just want to also remind you, we're talking estimates and I, I say this in my budget presentations, I'll say it many times today. Our estimates is based upon the information we have today. We may determine, which would be wonderful for us, that something costs less than what we have here based upon the schools. We may also determine that it may be more. So, you know, again, these are estimates. My hope is that somehow, some way, our shade structures won't cost 2.3 and we can get that extra 7,000 in there. But if we don't, we have to identify that other funding source.
I'm just trying to understand, and maybe it's better to, for me to understand where the investments are being made from that equity lens, right? These are just all for the entire district. So I actually don't know if you're doing shade structure, is it all the campuses? Specific campuses? We have the hardcore at Elkhorn Village that we're not, you know, 138 seems doable. But then is there a reason why we're not doing that? Because they're going to be part of the foreign playground? I have, within that equity lens, I don't have a sense of what schools and campuses are being impacted. And that was a big part of our conversation in, in facilities. So again, I'm gonna assume that y'all in your小组 may have talked about it and I don't know.
But no, actually, we, we didn't talk about that specific thing, but we did talk in, can you not hear me? Oh, sorry, I just finished. We didn't talk about that specifically, but we did talk about every decision that we're going to be making is going to be from the lens of equity. So in terms of, you know, a remodel of a campus like Westfield and Elkhorn, it would be my suspicion that there's going to be a lot of demolition on some of those campuses and a lot of machines and things running over a block top like that in which we will have to fix. If you, if you, if you understand what I mean.
I, I hear you, but I just want to know that the sequencing of the things that you're saying are being, and I don't know which campus, right? So these are just whole, like, am I making sense? It's sort of like, I understand.
The general, the general idea is that we are going to look at the campus that has, you know, the greatest need, what the greatest need for our students as well, from an equity lens, right?
So I would like to know breakdown of which, correct, on which campuses, how much money is going for which, which campuses? If you're spending 6.6 million dollars in covered lunch area outdoor learning, we know Western Oaks already, you know, has that. So why would, like, it's hard for me to say yes without like, what is the campus? Could we actually have a full facilities plan? And I'm like, eh, part of me is, I would just love to see campus by campus, how much is being split on each campus, right? To actually make sure that, I understand that philosophically you're saying that, I need to see it in dollars instead.
What I can, oh, sorry. I did invite Angie to share. I also share that some of the, some of that information is in the S R three plan as well. And then I asked Angie to hop in to be able to provide some additional insight. And what we can do as well is make sure that we do provide you that documentation.
Yeah, because I think the public, in our, in the public trust, knowing that we want to lead from equity, it'd be good for us to see those investments accordingly versus lump sum.
So when we did certain things, like we went school by school to look at what the needs of were some of the schools. Bridgeway Island, really, the most of the Bridgeway Island needed was replacing dutters, right? So there was less of a need there for that school. But there was other schools that needed much more, much more work, right? And from an equity standpoint, I, I personally would be looking at fulfilling those needs first. We didn't have it broken, broken down line by line when we looked at every single thing. We only have the master plan to look at. And everything is broken down there. Go ahead, Angie.
Thank you. So it was all of the sites and the projects, they were site-specific based on equity. So to President Pizzotti's point with the gutter replacement, that is for Stonegate and for Bridgeway Island gutter replacements. And then when we're talking parking lots, for example, one of the things that we were really, oh. I don't think I'm muted, am I muted? Can you hear me? Yes, okay.
I can hear you, you're fine.
Okay, sorry. So one thing that we would have really liked to have been able to do with the S R funds is redo the parking lot at River City, even though it's one of our newer sites. It is cracked and several years down the road, not too far down the road, it will be in need of replacement. However, I believe that that, if memory serves, it was about a $6 million addition. But I'm glad you asked, Jackie, because it gives us an opportunity to show off the work that we've done. And I might actually, if Monique would like to, to share it, we have our consultants through Capital Program Management. And you could actually see how detailed and refined the estimates are because it is not only by site, it's by square feet, it's by need. What areas need to be, if we're going to stick with the parking lots, for example, what areas just need to be slightly refinished and slurry coated? And which ones need to have a complete removal and replacement? So they are to a pretty minute detail when you see the detail. And we do have CPM here, if that's something we like.
Yeah, like, again, I don't need the minute detail. I just want to, for campus, for campus, as a transparent commitment, as people are looking at our investments that, to your point, like you have covered lunch area, each, whatever, our 13 campuses, like, where is it going? Gutter replacement, you'll see Stonegate and Bridgeway, right? So people actually have an idea. I know it gets to be a long sort of, like, you might have to use legal paper in landscape form, but that's what I'm looking for, right? Like each campus, like you have this list, this, this Quick Strike, but also our campuses. And then the columns of investments accordingly. Does that make sense? Just so there's transparency and a commitment, because again, the, the, the community wants us to know that we're, we're sticking by our word in equity and investment. So we just need to see it, I hear you, I, you know, like, I was part of the, the master facilities planning under my leadership. So I, I know that that exists. But I think as we move forward and we're expanding it, we just need to continue to show it and see it. Does that make sense?
Yes, and what we'll do is we'll create that and make sure that we share it with the board.
Great. Other questions? Trustee Kirby Gonzalez?
Thank you, that is helpful, I agree. You know, instead of thinking off the top of our head, what school has this or that, which I was doing is we were presenting, it's helpful to know exactly where we're speaking of. And then can you help me to make sure that I understand this correctly when I go to relay this conversation to others in our community as well? The other funding, some of that we put in our proposal for the county to help capture some of this other funding for covered lunch, outdoor learning. I appreciate that it says outdoor learning, thank you. Shade structures, some of those were in our proposal there. I know that we can't count on that yet until it's approved. But that would be enough to cover at least some of these places, is that accurate?
Yes, that's accurate and definitely accurate that we don't count on the money until we know that we're receiving it.
Okay. And so what you need from us is any input on what to remove from a list? Or is this a later conversation?
That's a later conversation. What I needed was, for example, what Trustee Wong shared. What additional information do you, do you want? do you want, do you need to be able to make considerations related to this quick strike? Um, because we definitely want to start moving on these projects for our community, but we need you to be able to, to give us the green light. So sharing with us what you need to be able to make that decision, that's what this conversation is about.
Okay, well, then I think, um, hearing, for example, the River City piece, um, made me just wonder, doesn't our insurance cover anything if things go, uh, that feels like it didn't meet its lifetime?
That is a good point.
Um, so I wonder if insurance plays a part in any of these pieces. And then I guess knowing the specifics, of course, with our roof too, because our prior bond helped with um, roofs at many of our facilities. And then if we know that Elkhorn and Westfield are on this list, is that a roof for them, is that somewhere else? So those are important, I think, pieces for us to just understand. Um, because if we think about health and safety of our kids, I don't want people in a room, I don't think any of us, of course, do, if it's leaking. So we just need to kind of understand the level of what that means um, in terms of what sites we're seeing, and then, um, you know, if, if any of these pose a safety issue, I think is important. I know I was reached out to recently about some of the cracks in our, we live in Westoff, you know, with play soil, and some of the cracks that are happening in pavements and other areas, and if they are posing a safety hazard, how we, um, address that.
Great. Thank you, trustee Kirby and Paulus. Trustee Barnes, do you have any comments or questions? No? Clerk Vunegus, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I think the, the other piece that I'd like to see too is, is maybe also, I, I know Quick Strike, we're putting it all under Quick Strike, but priority, like, to, to then be able to then, because that other funding, obviously, um, it's what I'm, now I'm paying attention to that, and, um, maybe in our, but being able to see what's priority, what we're going to do first. Um, we, eliminating things from the list might be easier, uh, versus, you know, looking up and down the, the sheet. Especially if you got, um, feedback from the community, you know, how, how much, you know, how many votes we're in for something, you know, the majority. Um, I, I think also seeing in, in a priority, what comes first, um, would, would be something that I'd like to also see.
Great, thank you. Um, I believe that, um, in terms of our facilities master plan, the number one thing that, uh, we were going to address was equity. And then we had a second category of, um, VAPA, I believe, um, and then everything after that, we really didn't have enough money to even consider. Well, when I looked under this, um, this plan, it says the only thing under equity was water bottle filling stations. Which, I mean, I, I think that's important, but again, how many schools do we need that at? Because we're going to have that at, uh, Westfield and Elkhorn already included, correct? And then we have, um, we have, uh, the new Westmore Oaks, which already has those, correct? So then you're really looking at the, the remaining schools where that, that need is, is going to be the greatest, right? I think my, my curiosity would be, is there other things on there, on the Quick Strike list that we can go down to that might be um, a bigger ticket item that could also fall under equity? That's not just solely, um, one category. Is there a dual purpose uh, thing that could fall under, uh, you know, school climate and, um, or maybe deferred maintenance as well as equity?
So, the way that these were categorized was based upon, um, the projects listed in the information that was provided to you at the April meeting. So these, the categories for these particular projects were already set. These weren't identified by, by us recently. So when the subcommittee met, there were a variety of projects under each category. It just so happens, under equity, the water bottle filling stations were there, and that was one of them that got four more votes. When we are having conversations about equity, I, I propose that many of these items fall under the equity lens. In the sense of looking at our playgrounds, we want to make sure that students at all of our schools have safe, enjoyable playgrounds with shade. I think that that is something that we would look at in equity across the board. So I, I propose that when we're looking at this list, many, if not all of the items, touch the equity lens that we are seeking within our district.
Go ahead, trustee Kirby and Paulus.
President Pizzotti, because I agree with you when we looked at this, and my, why is that the only one there? And just for the historical reason, I think it might be because, uh, we had some PTAs that, um, were more resource, that raised money and wanted to have water filling stations. And then the issue was if your school doesn't have a PTA that's able to do that, should you not? So I think, while absolutely the others fit, and I think we need to have a conversation with our community, that the one way we address equity is not simply a water bottle station, I think that that might be like the historical context of it, um, of why it was put in that place.
Gotcha. Um, yeah, I mean, I would, I would say, you know, in terms of, you know, finding the, the schools that have, um, you know, safety concerns, and maybe for the longevity of the building, like gutter and roof repairs are very important, you know, as dry rot now sets in, once you get water and moist wood in there, just, it becomes a problem that compounds itself at year after year. So, you know, and then we run into problems like, um, you know, we, we saw at Westmore Oaks and then at, you know, Westfield and at, at, at Elkhorn where you found dry rot, right? Because of deferred maintenance being neglected for so long. So, um, I, I think also identifying things that really will prevent us from spending more money in the long run as well, is also something to consider.
One other thing that I, I would ask that we consider is also thinking about the timing of projects. Some projects are best done when students aren't on campus. And so we'll need to take that into consideration, um, with really creating a project plan, plan, looking at our priorities and identifying when is the best time to be able to implement some of these projects will have to be part of our, our overall conversation.
Great. Go ahead, Vice President.
Monique, I would just go back to your point, equity, deferred maintenance is actually within our equity definition in our master plan.
Yeah.
So I would just for transparency in terms of just the public, would code some of that as equity, right, that we know. Again, we're making an assumption and we're saying all this, but I think people need to see it in paper, because it is, all we have to do is, I pulled up the facilities master plan right now, equity, deferred maintenance is in our definition of equity funding. So again, what would be helpful to understand is that, that campus by campus, because we all know, we've walked all these campuses, know, we know who has gotten a little bit more love than others, right? And so that when people say, most of this money will likely go to Westfield in accordance with the master plan, there's a little bit of E, right? Um, and so again, if we had that campus by campus breakdown, um, so I, I would just think about it that way versus otherwise, it just looks like, I, you know, I know water bottles is not that, so I had to double check, I was like, I'm pretty sure that deferred maintenance is that equity, you just need to code it as that, moving forward. So I just wanted to clarify that, that it wasn't, it's just, again, deferred maintenance is part of our equity definition.
Yeah, I agree.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely agree. Um, okay, is there any other questions or comments? Next. All right. Okay, go ahead, Monique.
Well, thank you for the feedback on the Quick Strikes. So we will bring back to you, um, an itemized list of our, uh, Quick Strike projects, separated by school, and also looking at the categories for each of the projects. Um, and we will plan to get back to you as soon as possible, so that we can, um, be able to, um, move along also with the S R three plan. Now to the second portion of our.
I'll, I'll also add, I can probably some very, that we've already done some of this work, like campus security cameras and things like that. It'd be good for, again, for the public to understand that we started to make investments in accordance with the master plan. Right? So you have a plan, you tick through the list, and just, again, for transparency purposes, people want to know that we're, we put out this plan, a lot of money into developing it, and that we're actually investing in the things that we said we would invest in. Yeah.
The camera, I didn't realize that the cameras.
As we did last year on campuses, we're part of this, we're part of our Measure Z.
Not, not, so Measures Z is separate from the, the master, right? So how we plan this is, is slightly different. The bash won't help Measures Z, but the master plan has projects that we need.
I see what you're saying. So separate from Measures Z, Quick Strike, what projects have we been doing to address the master plan?
So the, so the, right, so the facility master plan is not just about measures, it's about the things that we need for our kids and communities.
Sure, I got it.
Got it.
No, I get it. I just, with it on this, I was, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Okay. So now we will move on to the second part of our conversation tonight. Again, just like with the Quick Strikes, um, presentation, this is information, this is discussion. We're asking for what other information do you need to be able to make a decision? In this presentation, more people will be joining me, um, in, in different parts of this, okay? So this is a conversation on our Measure Z master budget. So the master budget for the project that includes our priority projects and other costs, and the cost mitigation plan. Cost mitigation plan is basically, um, the plan for how we would be able to uh, pay for the projects that we want to do with the funding that we have. Next slide. So our purpose and overview, we'll review a timeline like we did before. Um, we will talk about a cost, cost validation and what that entails. We, we'll share the budget and the proposed plan, and also discuss our next steps. Next slide. As a reminder, our priority projects for the Measure Z are Westfield Village modernization, our Elkhorn Village modern, modernization, and our River City High School Performing Arts Center. Next slide. As we said before, we plan, we prepare, and we execute. Next slide. So this timeline will include our activities from January all the way up until November. Next slide. Give me, I'm having some, she's here. So in January. I'm sorry.
January 21 until November 21?
21, yes. So this is, so, so. Is there a question?
We're reviewing.
You ready to move on?
Sorry, yeah.
It's okay. And I'm having some issues with my, my slide. Not sure what's going on. Yes, my computer and I were not, uh, getting along, but I did print a copy, so that helps. Okay, so in, in January, the board approved the bond program plan. And in February, uh, we had our bond issuance planning, and that was the planning to determine uh, in what phases and how we would issue our bond, and that was three phases. In March, the board appointed the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee members, and also had two subcommittee meetings, that sub, those subcommittees were the ones that helped us identify the priority projects for our Quick Strike. In April, that's when we had the special board meeting where we received direction on our Quick Strikes. Next slide. In May, it, we had our bond sale of $60 million, and we began the cost validation process, which we'll talk in depth on what that means and what that was during this evening's conversation. We also had our first Citizens Bond Oversight Committee meeting. June, we continued the, the cost validation. In July, we received $60 million from our Measures Z fund, continued our cost validation, and we also hired support staff to be able to support us in our Measures Z projects. In August, we began developing the master budget for the facilities map, for the, um, Measures Z projects, and we began looking at our cost mitigation plan. Next slide. September, continued the work on the plan. We also released the Westfield Village request for proposals for our architect. October, we had our second Citizens Bond Oversight Committee meeting, and we're here with you now. Our plan moving forward is to be, be able to come back to you um, in November to approve the cost mitigation plan and the, and the master budget. Have the Westfield architect selection, and then December, we can begin implementing, um, our plan and begin discussions on our Westfield project. Next slide. So what is a cost mitigation plan? So it involves updating cost estimates based upon our current conditions, and we'll go into details on what that look like in a moment. Next slide. So project cost validation, it is making sure that we are assessing the integrity of our estimates against current conditions. Cost validation goes throughout a project. We want to make sure we're doing it often, because times and expenses are always changing. Especially when we're thinking about our facilities master plan, as I mentioned earlier, was completed in 2019. We've had a pandemic, and now it's 2021, so we absolutely need to go back and do some real validations of those costs and how those costs were determined. It ensures the accuracy and reliability of our costs, increases the probability of a project's success, and as I've shared, we have multiple cost validations throughout the project. At every step of the way, we're trying to make sure that we have very good and accurate estimates. Next slide. So the facilities master plan cost validation process, we had our staff and our consultants analyze the estimates in the facilities master plan for the priority projects, just the three projects that you identified were our priorities for our district. We conducted onsite visits to look at the basis of the estimate. So in that cone, we start with the basis of the estimate. We look at the calculations that were used, the assumptions, the scope, and any contingencies that may or may not have been included in the facilities master plan estimates. So at this point, I'm going to turn the conversation over to Angie, who's our facilities technician, and to Tim, who's with our capital program management, our cost estimators.
All right, thank you. It's good to be here with you tonight, and, uh, I try to keep out of the weeds. Uh, we've talked about this a lot with our implementation planning team, because there's a lot of numbers involved, a lot of analysis, and so we'll try to keep it high level for you. Um, so Angie, do you want to start with any, uh, any thoughts, or you want me to just move on?
You can go on, Tim.
Okay, sorry, I didn't hear your, I was so-
Sorry.
That's all right. So the facilities, as, as Monique described, the facilities master plan was prepared several, a couple of years ago, two thousand nineteen. And so this is the natural progression of a bond planning process. You start with a facilities master plan, usually those estimates are usually very conceptual in nature, usually developed by an architectural team. They have their own estimators that come in and help them put dollars to the scope of work. And then it, it's a natural progression to go into what's called implementation planning process, which is what the district has asked a CPM to come in and help them with. And so then you add a few more players to the mix, if you will, those that are in the construction industry. And we really start with the facilities master plan. The scope items that were identified in that facilities master plan, that becomes our basis, our starting point, if you will. So in the tools that we develop to help, you know, look at these cost comparisons, we entered into our system all the various categories, segregated into the, into the scope items, segregated into the cost categories that you identified, and that was our starting point. And then you bring in, you know, a cost estimator, and he'll, he'll put numbers to those, to those new, new, new scope items. The first step that we really need to go through after kind of laying the foundation of facilities master plan is really making sure that the scope and those things that we're estimating line up with the current assumptions, right? The scope and the assumptions under which the facilities master plan was prepared. And so we spent some time as the implementation planning team talking very specifically about the various scope items. What has changed since the facilities master plan was put together? And really delving in and refining that scope and the assumptions that were made during the facilities master plan. And once we were able to agree with those items and those assumptions, then we were able to have our professional estimator come in and start putting numbers to, you know, to, to those scope and assumptions. Do you want to speak at all right now, um, Angie, to the assumptions that were in place during the facilities master plan compared to now?
Yes, that would be helpful. Okay, Tim, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you.
Yes, so if we could speak just a little bit more to the assumptions, that would be helpful. And some of the, the items specific to the slide in addition to the contingencies.
Yeah, sure. So, and we did identify some areas, apparently there were some enrollment changes since the facilities master plan was put together. And then we did some additional site visits and looked at different site, site infrastructure scope that we added that was not in the original facilities master plan. Again, we laid the foundation by starting with the, the facilities master plan numbers. We found a few calculation errors in those, so we made sure the numbers were adjusted to pick up those additional costs that weren't included in the initial facilities master plan just from calculation errors. And then, so once, once we get the scope items defined, we applied the hard, the construction costs to those numbers, and then we placed those-
Can I, can I have you pause there? What calculation errors can you highlight, and by what degree did that impact estimate?
Yeah, um, bring out a document here, help me answer that question for you. When I took the numbers that were listed in the various categories of the facilities master plan, and I put them in our workbook just to make sure we were starting at the place, I noticed that there were some cost items in the facilities master plan that weren't actually added up the totals of each of the, on some of those categories. There weren't very many of them. The, the major one was for Westfield. There was a three, about three point seven million dollars worth of, of cost that did not calculate into their totals, and so we made sure that those were in our workbook. There was two point six million dollars in River City, the Performing Arts Center. And so again, we put those, those numbers in our workbook.
Because Westfield is a priority project, can you tell me where that three point seven calculation error was?
Let me see if I can pull that up. It was in the campus equity section. And I have to pull up actually the facilities master plan in order for me to tell you exactly what items they were, but it was in the campus equity category, the facilities master plan. Is that helpful? Do you need more detail than that?
I mean, you don't have to do it now. I'm actually pulling it up as, as you talk. I mean, those are kind of fairly big errors. I, I know that River City, I don't know if we costed out performance, we costed out classrooms, so I have questions there. But it might be, I, I'm happy to kick it to a subcommittee for further discussion, but like three point seven seems to be significant. Right? And so for me, in transparency and governance of this bond issue, but again, happy to kick it to the subcommittee for, to delve deeper as to what, why, where those calculations were made. So those errors and-
That's one of the reasons why we-
Continue because it's money that we're spending, so I just like, I'm like, oh, what do you mean? I don't estimate where, exactly where. So again, I, I, we don't have to, that's why we have subcommittees, and again, you could dig deeper there. But-
And what I can, I can share just a little bit here. You know, in the first area where it says calculations, some projects under the facilities master plan, it says some projects didn't incorporate all the totals. What Tim shared with me is sometimes it just didn't pull the line all the way down, and so we can absolutely share with you that information at the subcommittee as well. And then I, I don't recall if Tim you shared, but we also have to make sure that we're thinking about from firm to firm, the cost estimis, estimation, estimating, I'll say that. It varies from firm to firm. Each firm is going to have their specific standard. With SBA, who did our facilities master plan, that's conceptual. That is putting the big picture out there. And when you're estimating, it's not an exact science. It changes as I've shared. And so when we get down to where we are now, and where we'll even be when we start doing our construction, each firm's calculations, there's going to be a little bit of a difference. But when we decide where we're going, what architects we're using, what, what contractors we're going to use, that's when we're able to get more accurate and more precise numbers for us.
Monique, if I could add on to that a little bit, one thing when we first started working with CPM that they introduced me to was a district allowance, and I don't like seeing anything that is not needed on a projected budget. So I'm like, what is this? Do we need it? And that was the miscellaneous requirements that can sometimes come up during a project that typically we would take out of a construction contingency. And I happened to hear this not too long after we had to pay six hundred dollars for our fire hydrant test from the city because it was one of these miscellaneous requirements that has never been asked of us before. And I wish that we would have had a district allowance to pull that from as opposed to a, a, a construction contingency. So different lenses based on different experiences.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and you're right, they, different estimating firms have different ways of estimating, and depending on what scope, what phase, I guess, of the bond planning process you're in. And it doesn't make sense to get into and spend the money for a very detailed cost estimate when there are no drawings, and you're just trying to determine what are the rough order of magnitude numbers that we need to know at least to begin starting the decision process of what projects are there and what we want to do, and how much we want to go ask our constituents to support us in a bond. So that's a different lens when you're putting together facilities master plan. And then as you're moving forward and you, you get into the implementation planning process, it's, everything is refined. You're looking a little bit more detailed, and then it moves from the implementation plan into the design phase where there are even more refinements, and you start getting drawings, and you hire an architectural firm, and you're really refining the scope and getting more detail of what that project wants to look like. And, and part of that whole design process is, you know, preparing estimates all along the way of that design process. So again, you're constantly refining your numbers and making sure things are in line. And so that when you get to the point of putting those projects out to bid, you feel pretty good. You've got a good set of drawings that the contractors can bid on, and hopefully the market is such that you have some good bids come in. But at this stage of the implementation plan, you want to put in place in your master budget these sorts of reserves contingencies. For example, the last item here, last column here. Those contingencies aren't typically put into a facilities master plan. We added contingencies into our master budget. As the slide shows, ten percent construction contingency and two percent soft cost contingency. Maybe I should talk a little bit about the difference between those two. Is everybody know the difference between hard costs and soft costs when you're doing estimating for projects? Should I go into that detail?
Yes.
Okay. So when we talk about hard costs, that's the brick and mortar, if you will. That's the actual cost of, you know, putting the walls up and putting the plumbing in and electrical and everything that, you know, you, you can see in, on a construction job. There are other costs associated with a project, architectural fees, DSA fees, inspection, you know, prod, construction managers. And so we have developed over the years of probably a list of over a hundred and fifty items of every conceivable cost you can incur on a project. And so, you know, you kind of go though, as, as budgets are refined, you get into that level of detail. Okay, here's the scope for this specific project, what can we anticipate the cost to be? So you have your hard construction dollars, and then you have these other costs, which we call soft costs. And so we always take the hard cost from our, our estimator, helped us put together those hard construction cost numbers, and then we applied a soft cost percentage to that number to show you what the project would be with soft cost. And then we put those projects in time, right? Because they're not going to happen tomorrow, and we know time costs money. And so we looked at a cash flow scenario, if you will, when you're going to issue bonds and, and other, other considerations like, you know, one project has to be, because you need swing space to move students from that building into another building in order to start another project, all those sorts of considerations that go into the implementation planning process. And you put, you come up with a construction, a natural construction schedule, and then that helps informed escalation cost, you know, cost of time, what can we anticipate those costs to be from now, three years from now, depending on when you decide to put those projects out to bid. I don't think that I have to convince anybody that we are in some very unprecedented times, right? So we, the cost of escalation is a moving target right now. And we had some very candid conversations in the implementation team of what we should use as escalation rates. The facilities master plan used certain rates what they knew of at the time, which at that time was much different than it is now. And so we applied certain escalation rates for each of the years going forward based on what the industry is telling us, various sources that we go to. And so now we have an escalation cost. So we put all those components together into a master program budget so that as you move from the implementation plan now to a design fa, design management phase, hopefully we'll have enough allowances and contingencies built within these budgets that you can still do them for the costs that we've kind of put in this master plan. So very high level explanation of our budgeting process.
And to add on to what Tim shared is that we're, we're at the beginning of this conversation, and we will not have a better, the, I would say, one of the best ideas of what these costs will be until we actually bid the projects. And that's, and that's a, you know, a little ways away. And so having these contingency costs in there right now, and even as we're going through the projects, are definitely important. Having this conversation now to begin identifying our scope and identifying our priorities is, is a very important process into having successful projects. Next slide. So go ahead, Tim.
Numbers. You know, we like numbers. It looks ominous, if you will. You're going, wow, twenty four million dollar difference between the facilities master plan estimate and this new cost validation that we just went through. Why are the numbers so different? You know, I'll cut to the chase and tell you just in the bulk of the numbers, that twenty four million, if you take that two percent program reserve is three million dollars. So that's another safety net, if you will. So that's, we just said two percent of a hundred and fifty million dollars, three million dollars. Let's put that in what we call a program level reserve. Some people call it a program level contingency. We have contingencies at the project level, as, as Angie was talking about. And then we have this program wide reserve to take care of maybe some unforeseen things so that we can deliver these projects. So if you take the three million out, you're really twenty one point one million dollar difference between the estimate that was done in the facilities master plan and of the efforts that we just went through. Fourteen million, fourteen point five million of that are the, the contingencies that we just talked about. So that's the biggest portion of that difference. The other six point five million was the result of these implementation planning meetings that we had to read, to make sure that our scope and our assumptions aligned up today versus back in two thousand nineteen. So when you take that, and that's an escalated number, six point, six point five million, the really, we talk, if you take the escalation out, there was really only about four point seven million dollars difference. But by the time you add the escalation and the soft cost and the contingencies, that's what is, what's totaling this twenty four, really twenty one point one million dollars. And we have a lot of detail there.
Yeah, no, yeah, thanks. I'm, I'm actually looking at the escalation cost in the master plan. I'm just taking some of that just straight up because versus modernization that has a lot of elements. I'm looking at the River City Performing Arts escalation costs in the master plan as, as we're talking, is that for the two thousand twenty four, we had approximately forty million, but you costed it at, at fifty six point eight million? So I'm trying to understand the, reconcile that, right? So if by two thousand twenty four escalation cost for a performing arts complex on River City was thirty nine million, nine hundred forty nine thousand, six hundred fifty eight, but you said the FMP estimate was fifty six million, eight hundred twenty eight. So help me understand, like, what I'm looking at in terms of priority project, and then what you said the estimate at then is. So where's the, where am I missing something?
Um, let me, I'll, I'll kind of go on some numbers and hopefully I'll answer that question.
Because your, your estimate is closer to the two thousand twenty eight escalation costs, or even closer to the two thousand thirty escalation cost. So help me understand, because you're saying the FMP estimate was fifty six, but I was like, but actually in two thousand twenty four cost, what I have as an escalation cost is thirty nine million.
Yes, very, very, very good observation. So here's what I did to try to compare apples to apples, and this was, you know, we, we talked about this in the implementation planning meetings. uh meetings. It's really hard to compare the two numbers. And so to try to get them to be apples and apples, what I did is I took the raw hard cost numbers from the facilities master plan. And then I used the same escalation factors that we used for our current cost escalation, right? So instead of using um the um you know, I I think the facilities master plan was a 7%, 6%, 5%, 5%, 4%. And you know, through the years, we used 8%.
Yeah. It it well, one, the it was both a hard and and soft cost, so they the soft cost were 28% of a project. We use 14.4, 11.3, 9.2, 8.1, and 8.1. That those are the percentages. At at least that's what I'm seeing here. And and maybe that's one of uh was a calculation error. And again, we don't have to go into details, but I'm I'm trying to just reconcile the numbers in my head between what is publicly posted and and what you have on this slide.
Yeah. I have to look at those number that you what you just named off were the escalation rates for the facilities master plan? Because I I show a little bit different.
Well, just for the the back, so I'm just like, because there's lots of different things in it. In modernization, I'm trying to understand this estimate using the one cost of a performing art center.
Right. If we look at just the interesting thing about this particular one that we're talking about, Performing Arts Center, our estimate actually came in less than what the facilities master plan did. And so but by the time you add, that's why the there's such a small difference there. But by the time we added our con- the the contingencies in and escalated it at the current rates versus this method, that's what that's what came into this percent at this small dollar amount. But that 56 million from the facilities master plan, I took the hard cost numbers. And um in this particular case, I had to add 2.6 million in the calculation errors. Came up with um 29 a- and then I then I added 8% escalation for 2021, because remember the numbers in the city master plan was of 2020. So I added 8% for 2021, which brought their estimate up to 29.3 million dollars. Then I took that number, used our same escalation rates that we were using for our current cost estimates and um applied uh a- and came up with this new 56.82 million and using their soft cost percentage of uh what was it, 2020, uh 27, I think? So 20, 28, 28%, they use 28%. And and so that's how I got the new, I that's how I got the new FMP estimate to compare to our estimate to try to compare more apples to apples. That's it's why I'm saying it's a little bit difficult to compare the two numbers. And that's how I came up with them.
Yeah, that's fine. It's yeah, thanks for explaining. Continue.
Okay, so let's see where was I? So anyway, so my, the main point I think I wanted to bring out was that the majority of this 21.1 million dollar difference, you take out the 3 million extra reserve that we put in, was 14.5 million in construction contingency and then a little over 6, 6.5 million in the actual um hard construction dollars. Now, we did add to our estimate that was not necessarily a master plan, we we add furniture and equipment. And we had some additional site infrastructure um cost in there. And again, just refinement based on meetings that we had.
Are there any more questions on this particular slide? And what we can do for the board is make sure that we provide the details for these cost estimates as well.
I was just gonna say quickly, and it it also helps us to remember that in 2024 or the 24, 25 numbers are are for for Westfield, because that's when we'll be addressing that. Costs increase as time goes on. You know, you look at 26 would be Elkhorn, right? Again, the costs have escalated two more years since we're going on to and then the Performing Arts Center, which is later date. Again, you've had all that time for costs to escalate. So I I do appreciate you taking a look at those numbers from the date in which we'd actually probably break ground. So that does make a lot of sense. So I do appreciate those. Those, thank you. Uh Christie, you had something?
I just um said that it would be helpful to have further breakdown past, like some historical bit breakdown. That's all.
Absolutely. We'll provide that for you. Any other questions on this slide before we move on? Absolutely, I do. Okay, next slide, please.
So in part of um our master program budget, if you will, um we um add other costs that were not included in the facilities master plan. For example, what we call program uh cost. Um and so these are costs that are not really specific project related costs, but they're still costs um that are usually part of a bond program. And those um the majority now also that the 6.1 million dollars also includes um bond estimated bond issuance cost based on the issuance cost of the first bond. So I um make sure I get that number here, 724,000 of that 6.1 is really bond issuance cost. So when you go out and sell a sell a bond, typically you don't get the full amount of the the bond issuance, um because there's costs associated with issuing it. And so um part of this 6.1 million in program cost is 724,000 dollars in bond issuance cost, leaving about 5.3 million in program. And the majority of that 5.3 million is basically program type project management. We added 3% of 150 million just as a placeholder for um if you had like a program project manager type of entity come in and help you uh manage your overall bomb program. Um that would be a typical cost around 3% of the bond program. So that's the majority of the cost. The other cost is included in that is um your audit, cost of audits, you know, the bond has two to a performance and fiscal audit um during every year. And so if that costs are in there, legal, maybe bond legal counsel or even legal counsel associated with um the construction projects. You're the the new hire that you had for the bond program. Um specifically, there are time spent on the bomb program, so we estimated some cost in the program for that. So you have these additional program costs as well as part of your master budget. And then obviously um the 15 million dollars in in debt repayment. We included that in the total numbers of the of the budget. Any questions related to that?
No, what you're hearing is that we put it in the bond, but we also said we we have to vote to vote it up for public concern. So we're not committed to that yet, the debt repayment, just so you know. And Monique, you know, because that was a point of contingency. So I just want to be transparent with the public that we put it on there for different reasons, but where it's not to come before a board for a vote, and I don't know if we're we're there.
And that's part of tonight's conversation. So these are the proposed components of the program budget for you all to discuss and then bring to you for a vote on what will be included and what will not be included. For example, shall we or shall we not, per your direction, include the debt repayment?
Yeah, and and it it's very evident by the 171 million dollars that there's not a whole lot of room for debt repayment. And we've already kind of identified our top three priorities. So this is going to, that would be a tough conversation to have right away. And so I think uh we'll have to have that, you know, moving forward.
Any questions on this slide? Any any clarifications?
I think if we were to have that conversation as well, we would need to know what is the savings by doing that. And we'd have to have some, you know, specific breakdown. The community clearly wants these facilities. We want these facilities happening as a priority. Um but I think to even enter into that conversation, we need to know exactly what that means, what might we be saving to understand.
And we came prepared because we anticipated that you may have some questions. Um if you would like, you know, written um paper details, we can absolutely get that. But um Blake from our financial advisors is here to provide you some um information related to that debt repayment. Blake?
Thanks, Monique. Good evening, everybody. It's been almost a year, I want to say, since we last spoke about this topic as the board and district as a whole was really planning to put Measure Z um on the ballot. I I guess it was, it was, uh, this is a little more than a year, because that was probably back in August of 20, I want to, I I want to say, and 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 before that. Um and so we really took a deep dive um into all of the district's outstanding debt and and in particular debt associated with the general fund. Um so uh as as many will recall, there's um four series of outstanding certificates of participation, uh all of which um are ultimately backed uh by the good faith of the district's general fund, albeit uh there are dedicated revenue sources pledged to the repayment. When looking at across the state, uh similar size general funds uh for K-12 school districts, um I I think it's safe to say that the amount of debt outstanding is on the the higher side. It's above the median uh for statewide uh school districts and even even nationally. And so I I think uh, you know, for for a lot of those reasons, the board in a very thoughtful way, I think, included a component within the bond resolution um for at least to consider the opportunity to repay some of that debt from Measure Z proceeds uh up to 10% of uh the voter authorization um or 15 million, and that's what we have here. So that's just kind of my brief recap, um which I think many of you probably didn't need, but I think it kind of sets the stage for um decisions moving forward. Um we did look at a variety of scenarios as to what the savings would be. Um and for the 15 million dollars if applied in full paying off what could be uh either a dedicated repayment of the 2017 COPs and or a combination of 17 and 14, either of which it's it's dedicating the full 15 million to paying off outstanding balance. And that would equate to approximately 1 million dollars of savings through the remaining life of those respective uh debt repayments. And so uh right now, uh the school district's portion of the 2017 COP's annual payments is approximately 3.5 million dollars a year. It's just the school district's portion. The city does pay a portion of it as well. And so that would allow for a reduction to, again, approximately 2.5 million dollars from approximately 3.5 million. And free up those dedicated revenue sources that are currently making those payments for available expenditures. And those revenue sources largely are revenues that are restricted for facility use purposes. And so there would be opportunities to still use available monies for capital facility needs. It just wouldn't be an obligation that the district currently has without any flexibility in making those annual payments.
Yeah, so quickly, I I just want to ask a question is how many um how many years are left on those uh facilities? Payments in which this bond could potentially uh reduce those payments?
The 2017s go out to August 1 of 2036.
Okay. So you're saying we would be, what what's, so what's the return on our investment there?
Well, right now, just the interest portion of the uh of the district's share equates to hold on, let me uh let me highlight the the just the years left. Just the, just the years left. Bear with me one sec, please. So we're talking about so just the interest portion of the district's share is approximately 11.7 million dollars. So that is the upside or, as you stated, return on applying those funds. Uh I I I will say this, because there's still going to be an interest component. So the district will not save the full 11.7. There's still going to be an interest component on the un the 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 portion of principal that's not prepaid. Um so that's that's kind of an important consideration. I do not have uh the interest number readily available uh after the fif- like the 15 million dollar payoff. I would, I would need to calculate that separately based on current market rates. And uh I can work with Monique to follow up on on what that number looks like.
And that's the district's portion and not covered by developer fees?
When I say district's portion, that just means what the district's obligated to pay on an annual basis. The district does utilize a variety of different revenue pledge revenue sources to make those payments, including developer fees.
Do we know what that is?
I
I'm asking Monique, I was wondering, because she would probably have a better understanding of what our cash position is from from those sources.
As I'm still learning, our district, Blake has been uh reviewing with me our financial obligations. Where we are right now in essence is we are using all of our developer fees that we receive every single year to repay our debt. And that's not a good position to be in because we need to be able to use those developer fees to improve our facilities, and we're not in a position to be able to do that right now. With the repayment, should we go that direction? That would free up those monies to be able to continue to maintain our facilities. If the board determines that's the best situation for our district. One thing that we will make sure that we do on this topic, as with the previous topic, is with our next conversation, we'll make sure we bring those details to you to be able to have um the background information specifically related to your question, Kobe. I'm sorry, President Pizadi. Um so that we can, we can provide you that details to be able to make a thoughtful decision.
So my last, my last understanding of of what we fell short from developer fees was between 400 and 800,000 annually. Um and that's what was coming out of the district's general fund. The reason why we, I think, we incorporated this into Measure Z was because year over year, we were seeing a million dollars, a million dollars and a million dollars that was putting us into a stretchable deficit. Um and ended up being part of, part of the reason why we did have to make cuts at one point. So you know, bad, bad uh you know, economies play into that as well, but certainly that was something that we looked at. I I would have a hard time going in that direction right now. But I think that was the rationale we we used for looking at uh putting that onto the bond. Uh so it could be there as a consideration kind of in one of our lower priorities.
Well, I also think that was much more complex than that than
So let me check for, I get, just for the audience, I think it was a little bit more complex than that. It's just, it was
It's just, it was there just in case, as a safety net if we needed it, not that we want to plan for it right now. Because we are, you know, I think we're, with the federal dollars, we're pretty good, right? And so, Blake, let me check for understanding in the math. We paid down 50 million in our principal to get less than, to save less than $11 million, potentially in interest?
Yeah, so there is, for just the 2017, and again, just the district's share, there is over 41 and a half million dollars of principal outstanding. That 40, that 41 and a half million dollars coincides with the 11.7 million dollars of interest to pay off that remaining COP for the 2017s through August 1 of 2036. Should the district decide to utilize the $15 million to pay down the 41 and a half to some lesser amount, either using all of the 15 or some portion thereof, then the interest corresponding to the paid off portion would go down. And that would be, that would, those would be monies that would be freed up and otherwise used for other available sources.
So what is the approximation of those savings?
I would prefer to run the numbers based off current market rates and follow up. So you guys can get a more precise understanding of the figures instead of a guesstimate.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
And can you, can somebody email that to Dr. Hildreth so she can send it out to the board as a follow-up? Thank you.
Yeah, we, KNN will provide that to the district staff by week's end. We'll shoot for tomorrow, but certainly by week's end.
And I will ask any other questions on this information.
I think, I think that it is helpful to know the breakdown. I mean, if this was my home budget, you know, I would want to make sure we, we have debt that is not from, from this board. But we want to think about the health of the district when we're not here. And so I think it's important to look at, and that's, that's why it was included. And so we need to break it down and make sure that we are utilizing the best, the money the best way we can to help our facilities now and also the health of the district when we're not here. So I appreciate getting to see them in depth. Thank you.
You may continue. Go ahead.
Thank you. Next slide, please.
Well, this just pulls the numbers together for us to show us the grand total. So difference in project cost of 24 million. And then the 6 million in program and then 15 million gives us our $45 million difference between the two estimates. Thank you for next slide. Back to you, Monique.
Okay, thank you. So obviously, this is costing more than we anticipated. So what do we do? There's definitely big decisions to be made. In that decision-making, we propose three major steps that we need to take. The first is a project, creating project and educational facility specifications. What this means is standardizing our project and educational facility specifications within our district for consistency within our projects. You also might think of this as equity, ensuring that we have a standard for our schools. We have a standard for our classrooms. Of course, each school was, was built at a different time. And there are going to be special nuances that are specific because of the construction, specific because of the programs at a specific school. But starting with our conversations with our facilities department and with our educational department to determine what we want and need our schools to look like now and also in the future. The next is looking at our project scope to evaluate the facility's master plan, project scopes, to make sure it aligns with our district and our community needs. And finally, looking at alternative funding. We were specific here that we're looking at non-debt, non-Measure Z funding sources. Similar to our quick strikes, we're looking at our grants, our deferred maintenance, our E-rate. Should there be any COVID funding that might be available, we will look at those, those different areas to be able to see how we can pool our collective resources to be able to provide and create great facilities for our students. Next slide. So what are our next steps? Next slide. So we're here for discussion. Similar to the last presentation, we would like to know from you what additional information you need in order to make a decision on what components to include in the master budget. And if you agree or have other ideas and suggestions on what steps to take to mitigate the cost, to align the cost for the master budget so we can have great facilities for our students. Our goal is to come back to you in November with the additional information you need to be able to make a decision. Next slide. Again, thank you to the team for helping us prepare this, this presentation and all of this information and will help us as we're moving forward. And what additional questions do you have at this time? Next slide.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Thank you again to the team and to the presenters for being thorough in their presentation. I just had a quick question, and I think this is either for, it's probably for Tim, Monique, in terms of the production costs of, or project cost. I know a lot of, a lot of items and a lot of materials are seeing an increase in cost right now due to supply chain issues, labor increases, because, you know, there's fewer, fewer people to do the work or fewer filled positions to do the work. Are we seeing that play out in these costs? And is that potentially going to go down? I know labor won't go down, but will other raw materials necessarily go down as time and supply chain issues get fixed?
I can answer that if you. You know, that's, I wish I had a crystal ball. I really do. These are considerations that we're faced with every time we put together these sorts of budgets at this phase of the planning. And we really don't know until these projects go out to bid. You know, the, just to give you some raw numbers of a particular report that we received from the Association of Construction General Contractors. You know, the chart shows that these inputs that you just relay, relay the cost of labor, these ships sitting in port, you know, with unable to, you know, offload their materials. These, they call them inputs to construction. They've increased 27.8%. Now, that's what the industry is experiencing, and yet bid prices are only coming in about 5%. And so the discussion is, at some point in time, these bids are not going to be able to be held at that 5% if the inputs of those, those construction costs are increasing 27.8%. And so we have seen things come down. Lumber was, is a good example. It was, it skyrocketed and now it's back down to what it was before. So it really is kind of hard to, to forecast these things. In fact, our estimator said this is the first time in his, in his years of experience that there is both an escalation increase and an inflation increase. And that's below my pay grade. I don't know exactly the difference between the two. But we have these two, these two pressures, you know, pushing those costs higher. I mean, who knows? I wish I can tell you what's important in the planning process is to make sure you have these reserves and construct, and contingencies in place so that hopefully, you know, you can mitigate some of those costs or, and, you know, put some sort of safety net in there to at least help you move forward with your design process without just, you know, being stagnant. But you're not going to know until the action goes out to bid.
Right, right. I appreciate that answer. There's one other factor that I was just kind of curious about. I remember when we were doing our Measure V project for, for the new Westmore Oaks. What we had initially got a bid for was kind of the Cadillac of, of schools, right? And we did have to pare down some of our things to make, that we wanted in order to make it work. Is that built in to what you're seeing? Is this the pared down model or are you looking at all the things that have just been addressed? And is there room to make it a, you know, a very functional facility? And, you know, still high-tech, a 21st century classroom or a modern performing arts center without it being at the highest possible, you know, estimation? Is, I, I don't know where you're estimating this. Where is it coming in at?
It's a very good question. Angie, you want to say anything about that or Mark?
Yeah, I can, I can share. What we're basing these estimates are on is the facility's master plan. And in the facility's master plan, that's, as Tim has shared, that's conceptual. That is a Lamborghini. And we might do fantastic with a Corvette. And it's still a great, it's a great car, and it's a great, a great school. A Toyota.
Or a Tesla.
Oh, Tesla, yes. But I think, you know, a very important thing is, you know, we've mentioned through our conversation tonight is that we need to refine the scope of the projects based upon our needs. When a facility's master plan is created, that's very conceptual. And, you know, we, we were looking at our performing arts center because even though we're in this process now, we are still looking at details of our different projects. And in the performing arts center, for example, and we need to come to you for direction, right now, in the facility's master plan, it's a 1,000-seat performing arts center. We need to determine in our community and our district, is 1,000-seat performing arts center what we need? Maybe. It might be 900 feet. It might be a 700 seat. And in that, that begins to shrink the costs. So this is part of the process that we need to take when we're evaluating the scope. You may remember the, oh, I'm forgetting the term now, but value engineering is a term that, that the team speaks about often. We need to identify really what, what do we need? What do we want? And what's best for our students moving forward? And that's, that's a continual conversation that we'll have on each project.
And on the performing arts center, you know, maybe we can get 1,000-seat performing arts center if we have partners in funding, other funding source partners or especially for utilization of it, right? So just things to think about. With that, I think that's all my questions, and I appreciate your, your answering those because those are very important to know as we kind of look forward for this discussion. Next, Vice President.
The question. I'll go back to Tim because now I'm your best friend, Tim. Did the, the cost validation estimate include the, the ESTR funds? Did you deduct that? Because we just, we just committed, we had a conversation around approximately ESTR $12.7 million being used. Did that, the cost validation estimate deduct some of those projects?
In the priority projects, you're talking about the three that we're talking about now?
Yeah, so I think you were on the call for, or on the Zoom at the beginning where we said, oh, is this the, the strike new project? So it's, we're, we're spending ESTR dollars and aren't measures Z dollars in the tune of about 12.7, 12.8 if we're rounding up. Did you deduct that from your cost estimate?
Yeah, those, those, any, any scope of work that was for these three major projects are, are in the, the bond budget and not the ESTR budget.
Okay, so you didn't deduct.
We did, it's not included, correct.
So, okay, so that, that is just the math issue. It's like if we're approving this, that means the actual value, you know, the cost would go down because we're ticking through some of this already.
No.
No?
They're two separate, two separate exercises. In other words, the costs that you see in the bond budget do not include this, include the scope of work that are in the ESTR projects.
Interesting.
Does that make sense?
You did it mutually exclusively, like you didn't, yeah, you didn't, you didn't take into account the ESTR project because you're saying that they're separate.
So to clarify. The, the, the quick strike projects, the 21 million is not included in the master budget. That if we wanted to pay for the quick strike projects with the master budget, we would have to add another 21 million to the Measure Z master budget.
Correct. We did not duplicate scope of work in the two exercises.
Okay, so that would be my, okay, that's a different whole conversation that you've just opened up. Okay. Because I would imagine a master plan, even though it was for Measure Z, that those are the projects we need for our district. And so in my mind, the quick strike projects were those list of items, right? In my mind, but now I'm hearing that the list of items is, is totally outside the master plan.
We cannot affect the quick strike items, though. What we did is we took the quick strike items and from the information I was able to glean from the previous meeting was also identify a different funding sources or evaluate alternative funding sources for the quick strikes. And it was specific on the quick strikes. So we got the estimate for the quick strikes at the 21 million. And then we also identified a potential funding source for it. We did not want to duplicate efforts with the Measure Z, Measure Z master budget. And so just looking master budget for the priority projects. So our conversation tonight so our conversation tonight is on two separate items. The quick strikes with the 21 million and the priority projects' master budget, period.
And we were asked to confirm in putting those numbers together that we did not duplicate cost in either one. So even the numbers that were shared with the quick strike projects, there was some scope of work in that scope that was for Elkhorn. And so we made sure not to include that in the quick strike projects because it's included in the priority projects. So we did, we made sure that the, the numbers were not duplicated.
Okay, so I have a lot of questions about that. I'm not sure if I'm okay with that, actually, to be really transparent, right? Like, I, I don't know how others feel about it because we took, went through a lot of work for the master plan. We included deferred maintenance and all of that. And so I would hope that those are the, our prior projects generally because we put a lot of, by the way, there's a lot of community input into the master plan. I understand it was for Measure Z. But also I'm wondering, like, why wouldn't you, like, if you're doing Elkhorn Village, whatever, like, deduct that from, like, just take the project on the master plan list that we identified already to fund that with ESTR first in places where we could. But again, I'm just one person.
You mean to supplant some, some of the Measure Z funding, kind of mix them two together?
Well, the master plans separate from the, like.
Or I mean, not master plan, Measure Z, Measure Z.
Right, correct.
Yeah.
Or the over, the overages.
Yeah, I mean, go ahead.
It almost feels like this isn't maybe a Measure Z quick strike. And so it really is just a facility plan quick strike, which is what's adding a lot of. But I'm also saying I would like it to be Measure Z, like, master. But I'm also saying I would like it to be measures they could strike for like master plan quick strikes.
In in our sub in our subcommittee, I mean, a lot of the the conversation was that was. Because we kept getting asked about the quick strike projects, but we were like, well, in the. Modernization, a lot of the quick striker should be taken care of, like we kept going. You know, back and forth about a lot of these quick strike items are. Automatic or assume that it would be part of the mu- 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 modernization of of Westfield and. Now as an example, so I think that's why, I mean, well, we kept asking that.
But at that time, we didn't have S R funds either when we had.
Right, so now that we do and it's not included, I think that's where it's like, wait, whoa, whoa, like. That's a little bit of the.
Vice President Wong. You're thinking, so can I clarify your thoughts? You're thinking maybe we should have, because we we did pour a lot of energy, even as parents, I wasn't on the board at that time into. This measure Z master plan and you're thinking, let's prioritize those with this S R funding, maybe, yeah.
Especially since we're telling we need to mitigate funds.
And I fully agree with the incorporation, what. Uh trustee Vanegis just said, as far as. The incorporation of some of these things taking place with the modernization, because in my head. Trying not to be simply Elkhorn minded, um since I do have kids there, but in my head, I I see this and I think, okay, well. When we upgrade, blah, 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 our. A B C is going to be taken care of. It it has, I have had the same thought. I can be more specific, but yeah, the roof, the walkways, the whatever, the the fountains, all of it. So so I'm and I'm not saying anything here, except that I am confused as well and when when I look at this, I go, well. Okay, but I don't know, are those most important or?
And a basic math, we're forty five million over. Is what you're hearing and so why wouldn't you apply S R to the forty five over?
That's a good question.
Monique, go ahead.
Thank you. So I I have a comment and then also Angie has some additional information to share, which may be able to clarify my comment. Um from what I understand is that the pri- the quick strike projects and please correct my understanding if it's incorrect. Was our conversation last spring when we were talking about measure Z. Is that correct? And last spring, we were also in the midst of COVID.
Right.
And this additional funding came about called S R three, which the end, which is to help mitigate the impact of. Uh COVID nineteen. Many of the projects um on our quick strikes. Are a result of or can help mitigate the impact of COVID nineteen, therefore we can use S R funds. We can absolutely continue to call it measure Z. We can call it. We can absolutely call it measure Z if we're not going to fund it. Under our S R funds, you still have to go through with the approval of using S R funds. For these projects. If we do use S R funds to fund these projects, then they're no longer measure Z projects. They still came about as a result of our community input. From measure Z of our engagement for measure Z. However, they are projects to be able to help our students. That's I think that's the foundation. What I need from you is direction. Where do you want us to go with these projects? Do you want us to include the quick striped project costs in the measure Z master plan? Do you want us to wait until you determine if you're going to approve them for S R three? What what direction do you want us to go?
Two separate conversations in in today's decision is. Just spending S R three funds.
Discussion.
Discussion, we're, you know, the 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 discussion today is just these funds spending them, but it but again, the in the entirety of it. The confusion, I think, is still the numbers on on the measure Z side. Being that now we're over, right? Like that now now it's worth the forty five million over, so I I I think. The idea would be by. By deciding or moving forward with 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 the S R three plan. That the costs on the measure Z side would go down. That's what the idea would be, but I I don't think that's what we got, so I think it makes it. A little difficult to.
Yeah, I'm going to get to Angie now. Go ahead, Angie.
Thank you. Uh I wanted to add maybe just a few notes. First of all, with uh. The cost of the projects as they're detailed in the facilities master plan, as Monique had pointed out, those are really the Cadillac versions of those projects. One thing that we have done in preparation uh for these project is the budgets are tailored towards a lease leaseback method. Which means that we would incorporate the contractor fairly early on. So the contractor and the architect both have the budget before there's really even conceptuals that are made. Typically, what we've done in the past is we've done a hard bid situation where the architect will design. And then we don't know the true cost of the project until it goes out for bid. Possibly two years later and then who knows what materials cost and so on from there. So if we have details that the architect and the contractor are required to include and we're a part of that. Team and procuring the project, they're going to design towards a project budget. And now that we know that really the Cadillac version is not in our budget. Um we kind of have a little bit more of a realistic expectations as far as what we can look forward to. And then one of the limitations with the S R funds is not only what we can spend it on, which. We did tailor the uh projects for the quick strikes to use with the S R funds. Um i- in accordance to the priorities that were voiced by the stakeholders in the facilities master plan process and then also through the subcommittee process. Um but there's also an expiration date on those S R funds. So we really don't want to tie those to a project where there's so many different variables. Um as far as timing and then also um just making sure it's really clean for auditing purposes. Uh it's it's better, in in my opinion, to isolate those, that way we can get them going right away. And we don't need to worry about any sort of limitations or stipulations later on.
So Angie, to be abundantly clear. Probably misnamed measures the quick spike projects, probably misnamed, causes confusion. These are, but these are identified project in the facilities master plan?
Yes, they are, and that's actually where it stemmed from. When we first started working with C P M. We were going to do everything we could to include those quick strike projects as a part of the hundred and fifty million dollars. Once we started to get more of the numbers back, fine tuned for the priority projects, we. You know, we're a little sad that maybe these quick strikes couldn't happen. And then when we got the S R three funds and we saw that we could use those on facility improvements and many of them. Met the needs of uh those that were voiced by the stakeholders, that's where we could kind of shift our focus a little bit. And they were the most prominently voiced by the stakeholders and they exactly match. The facilities master plan, but the reason why it that document, if it does say measure Z on it, is because we were hoping. Uh initially that we could pay for those out of measure Z.
Okay, so that provides clarity for the people who are watching, saying that it's actually just. That's why I'm making a disagreement, facilities master plan with cost estimates separate from a funding source. Two different things. Because the facilities master plan are the things that we are trying to get done on our campuses. And we're finding different ways, and this is partly to because it's on YouTube and live, that people who are following like, what's going on here? Is that the quick strike and for the the, you know, public who's on the who voted for these things. Is that those quick strike estimates are part of the master plan? Okay.
Yes.
So and theoretically, we had Tim did another estimate, he wanted the on the funding side, kept those kind of funding separately. But theoretically, if we're not trying, they may reduce the overages. That are in the presentation as part of the mitigation effort. Possibly, we don't know to what extent, but there's a possibility that the S R quick strike. Projects that are in the facilities master plan will give us a little bit more money to fund other things in the physicals. Facilities master plan with a measure Z budget.
That's what we're hoping for. Uh for example, the shade structures or an outdoor dining environment. That's something that is a possibility, especially once we know conceptually what what we want to do modernization wise with those sites. Because we certainly don't want to spend S R funds um and put them right in the middle of a quad that will soon have. A cafeteria there and we would have to remove it. So once we conceptually know the layout, then we can start including uh some S R funded projects, but we also don't want to. Tear down work that we just did either and that's not efficient or.
But unclear to the public, it's not like, oh, new extra projects, it's. These are projects already identified through the facilities master plan discussion.
Yes.
Because what you, a couple minutes ago, it was like, no, 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 these are new projects. No, they're not new projects. They've already been identified. They're part of the master plan. Thank you. That's all I needed to hear because it was like, wait a minute.
All right, Court Vanegas, go ahead.
All right, so yeah, yeah, funding sources, thank you, thank you for for that, Jackie. Um so now, just as as I'm thinking about this, in theory, none of these. Quick strike items would be seen at an Elkhorn. Or Westfield. Well, no, no, like not because it's if it's.
No, 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 yes, no, that's why I asked for the 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 landscape, legal size of which campuses these were going.
Right, right.
Because we don't know based off an aggregate total. So that we won't know until we see that, Clerk Vanegas. And that's what like that's, that was my very first question of like, I just need to see that it's aligned with the equity and which campuses. But possibly, yes, I we just don't know that from that.
Some of these things were aligned with, you know, the master plan for Westfield and Elkhorn, for sure. So, that's what I'm saying. I don't know if you can hear me or not, but yeah, for sure, some of them were aligned. So yes, like maybe a covered lunch area somewhere would be would be under that, I don't know, but.
What I what I meant was the quick part, so like quick strike, we wouldn't see it because we're. The the Westfield and Alcorn, obviously being the bigger projects. These quick items wouldn't be seen.
We don't know.
Okay.
But that's the what we've asked staff to tell us where the where where are these quick strike? We don't know.
Yeah, so i- it really does break down to needing a line item. You know, where where each. Which location of some of these things are and how much are we estimating costs are for those structures? Or improvements or whatever.
And I want to be clear, the board doesn't know because we don't have the information, I'm sure staff do. Because they can, you know, Angie knows off the top of her head can, but again, I think we just need to see it as a board, I just want to be clear for the public. It's not that we as a district don't know that the board doesn't have the information to see right now.
May I ask a clear, a few clarifying questions?
Go ahead.
So would it be helpful? To. Provide the detail. For each project. The facilities master plan, quick strike projects is what we'll call it for now. Uh this is exactly why we're having this meeting today is to get get terminology right and find out what information we need. Okay, um identify each project, the cost. And the potential funding source.
And school site.
Of course, of course, school site. So school sites. The projects for each school site, the cost. And potential funding source. Yes.
Yes.
What other information would you like?
Hey, go ahead, trustee covering and tell us.
Okay, thank you. My questions are, um. With the bond oversight committee, if they're using S R dollars, does that still, do you still usually take them? Um these projects to them, even if they're not using measure Z, since they're looking at the facility plan? Okay, it might be worth though telling them, at least letting them know, here's how we're leveraging money, even though I know that there it's not in their purview to. Um put that into their report. And then um I think a couple pieces that we might not know at this moment. Um but we do. We've talked about using um the Claridan Westmore Oaks campus as a swing site, but eventually we will have um. Excess facilities and so what that looks like in terms of long term planning. Um could be potential cost savings when we look at what we do with our facilities, so I think that. While we might not have hard numbers now, it plays into kind of where we're going with our facilities. And then um in terms of utilizing the alternative funding. I know um I visited the Natomas um Charter Performing Arts Center and it's. Was fully paid now a while ago, so this isn't today's dollars, but it was fully paid for by private donors, one hundred percent private funding. Um and so my question would be, as we look at getting alternative funding. Um I know that we have incredible V A P appearance. And I know that we have a lot of partners and business partners and others. So how could we maybe take off our board hat, but as citizens hat? Start reaching out to the community, what would that look like to start trying to fundraise towards this project, especially when you say? The district's committed to doing this, the community can maybe come and help match some of these businesses maybe can. Does that look like a music booster pot of money? Does that look like a district facility money? What does that look like in terms of how we can help? Um leverage funds and and start talking to our community about helping us.
I think Angie has a comment.
I I do regarding the performing arts center, um you have brought that up last time. Uh Sarah or trustee Gonzalez, sorry, I'm bad at these, but I I loved that idea then and I still love that idea. Um if I could make a, I guess, a public recommendation right now, it would be that we would have some sort of rendering or some sort of conceptual to show. Which actually would vary quite a bit from the facilities master plan more likely. Uh in this process, in the facilities master plan process, we truly did say we wanted the Cadillac version, we wanted. A graduating class to have all of their parents come in and view their kindergarten or graduate or whatever the case may be. Uh it turns out that that's not very common and uh comparable districts with a similar enrollment. Uh most of their performing arts center, even when it's only one for the entire district, uh the most we found was about three hundred and four seating. Uh so that is going to be a huge savings if we want to go that way. One thing we want to avoid is if we are, especially if we're looking for donors and for support, we don't want to make promises that we can't. Keep or have or or may not intend to keep. Um not that we wouldn't have that intention, it's just, is it necessary and would it be utilized? So um I think I I'm, I think it's a wonderful idea to get support from donors, but I think. Fine tuning what that scope looks like would be the first step.
And thank you for that, that's that's a good point. And I think that's kind of why I asked the question about Cadillac or Lamborghini versus, you know, a functional. A Pacifica. Versus something that's functional and very good, but. Still, maybe if we had something that was, you know, seven hundred seats versus a thousand seats. And, you know, state of the art, it can still be state of the art at, you know, seven hundred seats. And maybe save us, you know, ten million dollars, right? That brings us down considerably closer to where we need to be. Um so i- if different options on something like that would be very helpful and. I think we need to also know that as we look at our school sites as well because. The school sites were based on the Lambo uh plan as well. So um I think. Different potential options in there um and looking at ways to pare down. Our funding source or our pared pared down our costs to get them within the hundred and fifty million would be ideal.
And President Pathati, can I add um to that? I agree with you. And if we talk about um. Angie, you're in, you're welcome to call me Sarah, you're uh the fabulous um. Idea here of having a conceptual plan, you're absolutely right, not making promises to our community. We have that slated as August twenty twenty eight, so just having an idea in our head of when a conceptual plan might be. There, so we might be able to go out to our community to help utilize our bond money would be helpful too, would that be a year out more, you know, what? there. So we might be able to go out to our community to help utilize our bond money would be helpful too. Would that be a year out more? You know, what might that look like? So, thank you.
Uh, that's too bad. Yeah. So it, it was good to see, um, that when I think the, we, we listed our prioritization and the years in which we, um, project our, our projects to, you know, break ground and, you know, 2024, Westfield, the lowest cost also was, you know, closer to the, this budget estimates of dollars, right? And when we estimated, estimated out the performing arts center, it was for 2028 and that's when prices go up exponentially, right? So we have to build in what we, uh, you know, what we have into the budget. And that's going to be more money just based on costs, right? Just purely on inflation. So, um, any other questions? Go ahead, trustee Barnes.
I know that developer fees aren't much, but with all the new building, how much are we from getting from the city? Do we already ask this?
No.
Oh.
We just asked for six years. So, but you.
Yeah, go ahead.
For six?
We asked every single year. So, but.
Oh, oh, you ask every year for, you've asked every year for the past. Well, and it's also good because the community comments on it and it would be good for them to hear that answer.
Monique, please.
Can you ask for specific questions?
Oh, I thought I did. Sorry. Uh, we have a lot of new building, especially over near Elkhorn and Riverbank, um, happening. And I'm wondering with the developer fees over there, how much we, we actually benefit as a district from those fees. I know it's not much, but I'm curious to see how that helps us, if it does.
So several board members put up a, a zero. Um, our developer fees, as I shared, goes to our debt. And so our ability to reinvest into our facilities, it's not a possibility at this time. That's what the developer fees are, are, are the primary intent is for.
Great.
So they go to pay off the high school, Stonegate, you know, those, those debt obligations that we have. Primarily the high school, yes, but those two facilities.
For example, just kind of reliving the past is that there was supposed to be an Olympic sized pool with the, with River City, but the cost went up, right? It just anyways that they built a smaller pool. And so, and they didn't do a VAPA center. So that's just, just history here.
And that was part of, you know, some of the other potential bonds was there was supposed to be a performing arts center. So, um, that's why it's such a priority for families now. Um, and that's why they want this, you know, so desperately is to get a performing arts center in our community.
So, well, but to Tim's point is that the estimates back then said we could do something and we weren't able to do it because the cost overrun. So that's why this important, this conversation is critically important that we don't over promise, right? We are intentional that we scale accordingly, um, because the community has been burnt, felt, has been burned. But again, uh, you know, the market hit bottom. And so we, um, not this board, not even the last board. Um, that there were promises made to the community that the community felt were broken.
All right. Um, is there any more questions, comments? Monique, did you have anything else? Are you good?
Um, I think Angie has one last comment and then I'll close it out.
I have, I have one last thing, um, regarding the conversation of keeping the momentum moving and starting to think particularly about performing arts center now, because it is such an expensive build that the more preparation we do as far in advance as possible is definitely going to benefit us. Uh, we kind of went a slightly, a little bit rogue away from CPM where we started to initiate our RFP for the Westfield architectural services as to get that design going, which was three months ahead of what CPM had in, in their schedule. Um, but it was still conceptual at the time. So we just moved along with it, just moving the architectural RFP process up three months, that put their projections, CPM projections. Uh, we were, were able to reduce the cost by about $80,000 just by starting that three months earlier. So I definitely agree forward thinking is crucial. Getting, um, everything in place of far in advance is really going to be in our benefit. So, but I love the fundraising idea.
And you find $45 million?
Yes. Yeah. No, 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 no. Sorry. Don't take me seriously. Don't ever take me, well, yeah, sorry.
Nice, nice save. All right. Um, Dr. Hildreth, did you have anything else? Are we good?
I think we're good. And I just appreciate a lot of the background and the historical knowledge of knowing, um, how the master plan was developed, the, um, and our goal is to meet the expectations of the community. This is there, the community's measure. It is not the district's measure Z. It's not the district's master plan. It is the district putting forth the actions that the community has asked. So all of this information is really helpful for us to ensure that we're sharing the information that is needed so that you as trustees are also, uh, able to share with the community what we're doing, why we're doing it and how we're doing it. Knowing that it's, it's grounded in that initial document. So just a, uh, thanks for the, the, the new people, uh, getting this information is very, very helpful.
All right. And with that, um, there are no further items on the agenda and we can adjourn. So thank you, everyone. I appreciate all the, uh, all the people's help who put this together. So thank you very much. All right, good night.